It is six o'clock and we will begin this session of the Kerrville City Council. And I'm going to ask Councilmember Judy Eichner to lead us in prayer and our pledge to the flag. If you'll please stand.
Lord, we come to you tonight with thanks. Thanks for the community that we live in. Thanks for the quality of life that we enjoy. Thanks for our hills, our trees, our river. We thank you for the freedom that we enjoy, and many have died for that freedom, and help us to never, never take it for granted. We thank you, Lord, for Mark and Cindy McDaniel, and the many, many contributions, the many blessings that they have given our city. We're going to miss them, but we ask that you bless them in their new journey of life. And last but not least, Lord, we ask that for our new city manager, for the council, for the staff, that you provide us as we enter into a new time, wisdom, guidance, discernment, and the ability to trust one another as we make decisions for our city and the residents, not now, but for the future. We thank you for your love, Lord, and we just ask that you be with us. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Couple of housekeeping matters. If anyone present wants to speak on an agenda item, they need to sign up and present a speaker request form to the city secretary in advance of the item being read into the record by the city secretary. When speakers are called, they're to come to the microphone in front of either a seating area and begin by stating their name and address for the record. Note that public comment periods are for council to set aside time to specifically hear from you. Any questions that you might have will not be responded to until after public comments have concluded. Thank you in advance for helping to make this a good and positive and productive city council meeting. Now, in the way of announcements of community interest, we're going to go first to a presentation of the Guns and Hoses Committee. And I'm going to ask the city secretary, do I have that? Do you have the document? Okay. I want you to come up here to the front of the council. And if you don't know what the Guns and Hoses Committee is, I want one of the committee members to please tell us about that.
Okay. Well, in 2018, Guns and Hoses had their inaugural game. And 2020, we didn't get to have that game, so we've had three consecutive games. It is made up of four of us that are on the committee, but then it's the KFD versus KPD in a flag football game. Yes, they wish it was tackled, but it's on the flag because we need them for their jobs. And so then we choose a beneficiary every year. Beneficiaries are allowed to put in applications in like, what, October, November, the year before? Anyway, so then we choose a beneficiary and they receive all of the funds. And I do believe since 2018, the funds have doubled each year. So we're only in year number three, and we were just able to give away a nice sized check.
Good, good. Should I ask who won?
Absolutely.
And Misty Cody is with us tonight. Misty is Executive Director of Families and Literacy. And I want to say, this community owes a lot to the Families and Literacy Organization, helping folks to get to a literacy level that is important for them for work and just basic living, helping to get folks to the place that they can take the GED successfully, and other kinds of activities. It's really, really very, very special. So any other word from any of you?
One of the main reasons we try to have this game is, one, it's community outreach. The way, one for the police department, you're not just dealing with this in a bad time. Or with the fire department, you're not dealing with when you're sick or when your house is on fire. You can come out, you have some good camaraderie, you can meet everybody. And also, it gives us a good, the whole community, a good chance to give to a nonprofit organization. Because that's one of the stipulations to be a beneficiary, is that you're a nonprofit organization, so that all of them can turn in their applications. And we try to keep it local within Kerr County. That way, the whole community can kind of come together and one nonprofit can benefit from it.
Okay, all right, all right, good. And so, Fire Department is getting ready already for next year?
I'm sure they are.
And Police?
We definitely are.
Thank you very much.
Police want that dam in there.
Yeah, there you go.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it for all you do.
Thank you so much.
Let me just say one word importantly of, and this is reflected a while ago in Ms. Eichner's prayer. I think this is a good time to remind us all, and those who are viewing, that we are moving up on Memorial Day weekend. And it's not just sales that go on Memorial Day weekend. It is a reminder to us of those who sacrificed for our freedoms. And so, we come to it with that really reverent spirit. Okay, Mr. Kenius?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor and council, and welcome back for what we hope is a permanent return to City Hall. We have a few announcements tonight, a couple of from the library. The library is continuing to host authors. As you can see up here, we've got another one coming. Johnny Bernhardt will be here Saturday, May 29 at 2:00 p.m. In the library meeting room, she'll be discussing her new book, Sisters of the Undertow. And that chronicles the impact of Hurricane Harvey on the lives of two sisters living in Houston. It's hard to believe Hurricane Harvey has already been four years, 2017. Also, this is a big deal for us, the summer reading kickoff program will kick off next week. We have a summer reading program this year. The theme is Tales and Tales. Registration begins Tuesday, June 1st. And then next Wednesday, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the library, we'll be hosting a special kickoff signup celebration from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Got a lot of activities planned there. Kona Ice will be there, which will probably get me over there for sure. Live music by Exit 505 and a bounce house. So we encourage everybody to come on out, that'll be a fun night. And then our Parks and Recreation Department has quite a bit coming up too. The most important thing is swim season is here. I know that's going to make a lot of area kids happy. And the Parks and Recreation Department is pleased to announce that the Olympic Pool will be opening May 29 and will be open for Memorial Day. Children three and under swim for free, everyone else is just a dollar. Open swim is from 12:00 to 6:00 p.m. Obviously, Memorial Day, we're happy to have that open and we're ready to go. Can't wait for the holiday. Swim lessons are also available. Session one deadline is Friday. There's two more sessions after that, Sessions Two and Three. They also offer private and semi-private lessons. Group lessons are $45 per session. And I would encourage you to call the Parks and Recreation Department or go online to sign up for any of those. Also, don't forget Daddy and Daughter Dance is June the 5th. We have plenty of tickets still available. I think we're selling those, do we have a deadline for selling those? Date for the event, okay, so June 4th. Always a fun event, looking forward to that. We just have the Mother-Son Dance, so Daddy-Daughter Dance is coming up. We're looking forward to that one too. And finally, there are still positions and spots available on the Summer Soccer League. Registration deadline is this Friday, $350 per team. And there'll be a managers meeting held on June 4th at the Rec Hall. So we encourage people to, that's good exercise if you want to get out there and run around a lot. And that'll do it, I think you have an announcement as well.
Yes, before we do that, I would just like to mention that we had the Mega Food Drive from the San Antonio Food Bank on Monday. We provided food, I say "we," food was provided for 270 families, which was about 700 individuals. It was a great day, lots of volunteers. Our numbers are down somewhat, but that's a good sign. I think it means that people are doing better and able to get out, and that makes a big difference. And our food relief fund has 100, or we have collected a total of $144,500 through donations, which has just been absolutely wonderful. And we do still have some left. We anticipate using that this summer for, the kids will be out of school and there'll be needs for that this summer, so it's all good news.
Mayor, I have a couple as well.
Okay.
Going in chronological order, so, in observance and in honor of our, those who sacrificed their life for our country and our freedom, the Kerr County Courthouse, they're going to have a memorial observance there. And then next, this Thursday, just two days from now, in memory of the ones that we've lost due to COVID, the Juniper Village is hosting a prayer at the cross. That's going to take place, like I said, Thursday at the Empty Cross from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. All the community is invited, and a prayer will be officiated by a local pastor, and there will be complimentary music and refreshments. And then lastly, from June 7th to the 11th, that's a Monday through Friday, Impact Christian Fellowship Church is hosting a VBS Vacation Bible School. It's open to all kids who just completed grades K, Kinder through sixth. So if you have any grandkids, kids, nieces, nephews, it's a great opportunity for them to do that. Or if you want to volunteer yourself, you can register, go to impactkerr.com/vbs. And if you decide to register, tell them that my brother Nico Garcia referred you. Make that announcement, thank you.
Okay, good. And by the way, the courthouse Memorial Day service is at 10:00. All right. We now have a recognition that I would like to ask the city council members, if you would, let's go down in front of the diocese here. Okay, I would like for Mark and Cindy McDaniel to come up here. This is not something they do willingly. Mark has served so ably as our city manager. And Mark, over 35 years, has served seven cities. Came to us as Assistant City Manager from Dallas. And one of his highest achievements, I believe, is leading us to a conference of plan known as Kerrville 2050. But I will say, as mayor, my friendship with Mark has been exceptional and enjoyable, and I believe very productive. But he has been such a gift to this city. And I will also say that EA Hoppe, who has been Deputy City Manager under Mark, now steps into these shoes very ably and with great support from the staff and from community leaders. So, Mark, we appreciate you very much. And I'm going to read a recognition here. City of Kerrville Certificate of Recognition is hereby presented to Mark McDaniel for his four years of outstanding service as Kerrville City Manager. In recognition of Mark McDaniel's outstanding service as city manager to the city of Kerrville, including his cohesive and coalition-based approach to building a short and long-term comprehensive plan for Kerrville's future, his commitment to updating many of the city's outdated codes and ordinances, his dedication to ensuring that the city remains on exemplary financial foundations, his integrity, patience, and flexibility when dealing with staff, council, and citizens alike, and his faith in both God and the goodness of his fellow citizens, the Kerrville City Council is proud to present him with this certificate of recognition in witness where I, by everhearing to, sent my hand and caused the seal of the city of Kerrville to be affixed this 25th day of May 2021. And we have some other presentations to make.
Okay, first of all, we picked this picture for you because you're kind of sailing off into the sunset. So we thought you should have that from us.
Thank you so much.
Because that's how we see you, sailing off into the sunset. And then this is from Councilwoman, if you'll to be honest.
Are you opening it?
Yes.
Okay, you can open it.
Okay. All right, in this box, this was made from ash wood that came straight from Spain.
This is another brand of box.
Okay, and if you open the latch, what we've got inside here?
I'm like.
Okay, now this is fresh salsa from the farmer's market as far as the vegetables.
Wow.
Okay, so we have something from the farmer's market. Obviously, you have some lime and some, you know, this is, if you're happy and you know it, it's the lime. We also have some well wishes from your staff. And then I included some seeds. So when you're planting up in Dallas, you've got some forget-me-nots. And there's some seeds here that are labeled Carpet of Snow, so you'll remember this one. 2021. And then the mixed flowers are just because your staff is so amazing and so different, each and every one of them. And then last but not least, you're probably going to be doing lots of barbecuing since you're retiring, so I couldn't send y'all without some blessings.
Where is the rub prompt?
It's from.
Oh, buzzy!
Yes, okay. So, take this from council, it's our gift to you with many thanks.
Thank you so much.
And it's heavy.
So heavy. Thank you so much.
And these aren't for you. Because we all know that behind every good man...
Is a better woman.
For sure.
Thank you so much.
Okay, and then we have one last thing for you. On the River Trail, about halfway between the Schreiner Trailhead and G Street, there's a bench, and if you look up here, and it looks like all the other benches. Not any different. But this bench will have, what does it, Ashley, what does it say again?
It's, um, and thanks for Mark McDaniel and Cindy McDaniel, city manager, for stepping up.
Yes, stepping up to make a difference. So that will be there, and it's close to your mother's bench. There's one in between. And it looks like somebody was enjoying it, somebody was sitting on it yesterday. And I was over there. So these are just a love gift from us that will be there and will remember you by then.
Thank you so much.
More, some words?
Well, so I thought I was going to be able to do this quietly, just ride off into the sunset, you know, and just leave it in great hands. But I got a call this afternoon that said, you will be there.
Thank you, Judy.
You all are still my bosses, so I'm here. And I do have a few things I'd like to say, and I wrote them down because I didn't have enough time to really.
Then you didn't ask if you could, but it'll give you permission.
It's what the mayor said. Okay, so just real quickly, I won't keep going on. So to the staff, the best criticism of the bad is the practice of the good. You are the professionals who get the job done in the best possible way, regardless of how dark politics can get. And if I have a legacy here, it's you to carry on the good work of service above self, and you all inspire me. To EA, the biggest compliment the council could ever give me is the hiring of you as the next city manager. No one is more ready, or capable, more talented, or knowledgeable about Kerrville than you. It's been my joy to see you grow and to take the reins. You no doubt will take the momentum we have created to a whole new level. To the councils I have served, thank you for all of your support through all the many challenges and in navigating the opportunities. Over the last two years in particular, major strides have been made on the implementation of Kerrville 2050. Your devotion to the city without any compensation or reward is an example of truly dedicated public service to all of us. Your work is not for the faint of heart or for the zealot. My deepest appreciation for giving of your time and your challenge to this noble calling. And then to the community, pay attention. Make sure that your plan, Kerrville 2050, is relevant and updated as needed. Then ensure it's followed so that Kerrville remains the beloved community that we stayed here, are moved here for, in the first place. Also, please remember how important it is to elect the best possible city council members that can make a major difference in the direction of the city. Elect humble, thoughtful, kind, wise, nonjudgmental, and non-self-righteous and open-minded individuals who are capable of serving all parts of the community. To Cindy, thank you for being the sunshine in my day during this 35-year roller coaster ride. And to God, thank you for many, many blessings that even now it makes possible for me to retire and begin an encore career. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I want to say one thing in regard to the conference of plan that we talked about that Mark led us in, and involved over 400 citizens. There are over 400 action steps to that plan, which was adopted in June 2018. And we are over 200 of those that we have performed today. And so, we are well on our way and committed to accomplishing the rest. Thank you, Mark, thank you, Cindy.
Mayor, can we get a group shot?
Oh, steer wants a group shot.
Yep, yep.
Put them in the middle?
Oh, yeah.
We'll have it over to your side.
We'll get the tallest one on the end. Let's put Judy's closest to the.
Mayor, come over here.
Do I need to count to three?
Yes.
One, two, three.
All right, good, good.
All right, one, two, and three. One more, one, two, three. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Mark here is the.
Wow, thank you so much. Can I have a few employees haul this stuff out?
Yeah. employees to. employees to work. Okay. We come now to the district and citizens forum. Any citizen with business not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the city council. Prior to speaking, each speaker must fill out the speaker request form and give it to the city secretary. The speaker request form must be submitted to the city secretary before the item is called or read into a record. City council may not discuss or take any action on an item, but may place the issue on a future agenda. Each speaker is limited to four minutes, and this is an opportunity for citizens who signed up ahead of time to address the council. Ms. McLeary, do we have anyone who's signed up?
Yes, sir, we have two citizens, George Burdi.
Okay.
Okay, so George Burdi, 1616 Glen Road. So I'm just going to read. With the recent changes in leadership, one new council member, and I wrote down soon-to-be, I guess maybe it's already, new city manager. Now might be a good time to review Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, better known as the Open Meetings Act. This, of course, is a statute that formally assures government officials will conduct its business in full view of the citizens. With the possible exception of Mr. Garcia, each of you has already gone through the short training concerning this statute and its importance in maintaining the trust to the public. We all have heard the term "walking quorum" before, but you may not be aware that in response to a Supreme Court decision in 2019, the Texas Legislature converted an ambiguous definition of walking quorum into a very specific one. The new wording for Section 551, 143 of that Texas Government Code went into effect in June 2019. And it basically says that a council member commits an offense if he/she knowingly engages in at least one communication among a series of communications, that each communication occurred outside of a meeting authorized under the OMA concerning a matter within that body's jurisdiction, and the member knew at the time he/she engaged in the communication that the series of communications involved, or would involve, a quorum and would constitute a deliberation once a quorum of members ultimately engaged in the series. The statute goes on to say that an offense of this section is a misdemeanor punishable by a minimum $100 fine and/or a month in county jail. Before the law changed, it needed to be proven that someone was knowingly conspiring to circumvent the OMA by meeting in less than a quorum, whereas now, no proof of conspiracy is necessary. Simply knowingly participating in the series of communications is a violation. From comments made by council members at numerous public meetings, it is known that prior to every regular council meeting, each council member has been meeting individually with city manager to discuss upcoming agenda items. Each council member is fully aware that their co-members are also meeting with the city manager in the series of communications discussing the same material. Therefore, since June 2019, each council member has violated this statute twice monthly by knowingly engaging in a series of communications occurring outside a public meeting concerning issues under council jurisdiction when taken together constituting a deliberation of a quorum. Even if this practice were not a criminal offense, or a criminal violation of the law, as it clearly is, it is obviously not in the spirit of open and transparent government to deliberate these issues outside the view of the public in this fashion. One previous speaker at a meeting might say transparency has been taking it on the chin for these past two years of city council governance. Nobody truly wishes to make criminals out of the council. However, at a minimum, publicly acknowledging the mistakes and committing to cease the practice immediately would be a good start. And might I suggest, rather than city manager spending five hours every two weeks meeting with each individual council member, maybe a one-hour workshop with all five council members might be more efficient use of everyone's time. And of course, properly posting the said workshop as well. And you could then get back to being a transparent government. Thank you.
All right.
You know, I don't want to just let that lie for a couple of weeks. He has misstated the law, and the series of meetings that you all have individually with the city manager is both legal and appropriate.
Okay.
George Eichner?
George Eichner, 604 Cardinal Drive. You mentioned you're halfway through the 2050 plan. Well, we're halfway through our Kerrville Christmas Lighting Corporation fundraising, so I thought I'd just give you an update. We, as you know, our task to raise $100,000 to match the $100,000 that the EIC has pledged to us. And currently, we're at $52,000. Getting great support from the community, got good support from the Daily Times and from, if you notice in the paper today, there's a zigzag graph that shows where we are, and that's going to be published once and there's a zigzag graph that shows where we are and that's gonna be published once a week, hopefully to build enthusiasm and, and keep people informed what we're doing. Community Journal is gonna come out with that tomorrow. We've had two really great grants, one from the, the BCF Health and Services, Human Services folks that gave us a great grant. And then the Texas Community Journal, uh, the Hill, Texas Community Foundation, Community Foundation of the Texas Hilltop has given us the twenty-five thousand dollar challenge grant. So we are, we're excited and we'd like to just put the word out that we are still collecting money. And you can send it to most any place and we'll get it. Just mention this for Light the Island. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, good, good. Okay. Uh, we now come to the consent agenda, which these items are voted on together. Uh, unless council or a citizen calls for one of them being pulled.
Mayor, I don't want, I don't have one that I want to pull, but I just want to correct a grammatical error in four C. And I just wanted to clarify in the letter that was given to the city that the number in attendance for the Chalk Festival is ten thousand and not one hundred thousand. So there was a error in the number. So. Yeah, no reason to pull it.
Okay, all right. Uh, I would like to pull four B. And also uh, four D. And, and those are for clarification.
And in addition to, I also wanted four B pulled, uh, just for clarification. I don't have any problem with it. Uh, just for more information, I'd like to also pull four E for just, uh, some additional information.
All right. Okay. Do we have a motion for the remaining items under the consent agenda?
I move that we.
Can a citizen move to?
Yeah. Yes, ma'am, okay.
Yes, I move that we, uh, pull four E.
Four E has been pulled.
Oh, okay.
There are some citizens that are speaking on four E.
Are there any other ones that anybody else is speaking on?
No.
No? Okay.
Okay.
So we're pulling four B, four D, and four E?
Right.
Okay.
And I will move that we adopt, uh, four A, uh, four S, and four G.
And four C.
And four C.
Oh, and four, yes, and four C, I'm sorry.
All right, we have the motion.
Four C, four F and G.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, we've got the second. All in favor, raise the right hand. Okay. And that passes. Let me go to four B. We have done major work in regard to streets. Paving and reconstruction of streets when that is needed. And Kyle, I'd just like for you to speak to this in terms of what, what this involves, the four B.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So what you have before you is the testing, the quality control testing. This is actually coming before you because that's the first one we've had over fifty thousand. Put it in perspective, the one we did with Guadalupe Plaza, Nemo's that more profiled streets, uh, came in about thirty-three thousand dollars. Uh, so it was something that city manager had authorization to execute. So essentially what this contract does, now if you recall, we have the contractor awarded already. This contractor is specific to rock testing. They're gonna come out and make sure it meets compaction. Makes, make sure that the roads comply with the twenty-five, thirty-year design standards that we, we come up with. Most of this work is, is paving, but we also have the sidewalks with this part going through the Doyle area that the eight-foot shared use. So, uh, it's cumulative, uh, basically road reconstruction. It's not just the rehab that we, we're typically doing. Again, it's our bond dollars, maximizing what we can do, linking communities to downtown, uh, getting quality streets and, and in Kerrville again.
Any questions, counsel?
To clarify, we're within our budget. We're within the allowable use of our bond dollars. We're approving this because it's over fifty thousand.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, and, and so this is the second, and, and so if you recall, when we looked at the Westminster contract at the last council meeting or maybe it's previous, that Westminster allocation, a lot of that, or most of it will be streets, the remaining. So, you know, this, that's taking this contract into account.
Okay.
So we're, we're looking at that from a staff standpoint, the full, uh, you know, ten, ten million that was allocated for streets and drainage. We have the, the portion allocated for streets. We have the portion allocated for drainage. This is part of that, that budget.
It won't be every street.
Uh, well, it won't.
This, the, the testing that will be done.
The testing will be done on every street within the second package. So that's Barnett, West Barnett, McFarland. It's not, you know, it's not anything outside of that project. So that's if, if you look, I can read the list off here for you. You know, West Barnett, McFarland, Remshaw, Barnett, Wallace, Cottage, and Hillside are part of this package. So nothing outside of that. When we do Westminster, that, that's gonna have a separate testing contract.
Okay. And when do you propose to do this?
So the contractor is scheduled to start the utility relocation. They're gonna go in and lower utilities next Tuesday. Uh, we're gonna get a press release out this week. We were fine-tuning schedule. Their, the utility contractor will come in, barring any weather delays, but they will come in and start. You won't see the full, full-blown efforts that, you know, we had you guys come, come tour on Guadalupe. And, and again, if y'all want to look at that, I know we've got a couple of new council members. Feel free to, to let us know and we can get you out there. First, probably week will be a lot of utility relocations, or not, not the road reconstruction, as, as you know, it puts it down. Uh, wanna get ahead of that and then the road guys will come in and start giving us some new routes.
And I will note that, um, streets are one of the highest priorities of the citizens. And surveys, what the citizens have said. And so last year and a half, we've been able to pave and reconstruct about fifty-four percent of the streets. And we're continuing on that. Anything else?
About how long, the time period? You, any idea?
About a five-month period. So we're looking at kind of the, we want to get maximize paving season, uh, through October, uh, November is, is all we're looking at. The contractors, you know, planning to get out a little bit sooner than that, but, uh, the idea is before Thanksgiving, we're, we're done. That's when weather start, starts getting, you know, being a little bit more of an impact. We don't have the, the heat for the asphalt. So, be, be done out of the way. People can have Thanksgiving on, on their homes and, you know, new roads.
Okay. Is there a motion on this, on this matter?
I'll move that we accept, uh, four B as presented.
Okay. So I can?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, let me know with the raised hands. Okay. And then I pull four D. I pulled that for this reason. When we've looked at the Nimitz Lake, we know there is a restriction of internal combustion engines on that lake because that feeds into the water plant. And when we've looked at it, Nimitz Lake in terms of canoes, kayaks, paddle boats, everything else, non-inter内 combustion engines. And I may be speaking for you, Ms. Boyle, but this is an exception to carry out the triathlon, right?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Did I, did I speak for you?
You did a wonderful job.
Okay, so it's not, we're not gonna continue with internal combustion engines on the lake. This is an exception.
Exception for this event only.
Okay, all right. Any, any questions? Okay. I'm gonna enter the city council in the triathlon. As a team, as a team. Okay, all in favor?
Oh, you need a motion?
Yeah, how about a motion?
I'll move that we adopt, uh, resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-twenty-one.
All right, okay.
I'll second.
Got a motion second. All in favor, raise the hands. Okay. And it passes you now. Now, four E.
Four E, yes.
Okay.
Some additional information on what all that entails.
Okay. Uh, so we, we have all three on here. We previously brought the Kimley Horn contract, uh, to you for award to kind, kind of summarize what we're doing. Tech dot has the transportation alternatives program. Things every two years. Two years ago, we had the Safe Routes program on, on the Tally Elementary and Tom Daniels applications. What we've also added in is the sixteen improvements. So what this is, it's federal funding allocated through Tech Dot to assist in, in selection process and also the management of those funds. The original call had ten and a half million dollars. They bumped it based on the, the two-hundred-and-twenty-three-million-dollar request. I believe it was a hundred, around a hundred and thirty, uh, cities that, that presented projects. So they have bumped that to forty-five million. The, the caveat that is really the big push for us in, in getting this thing done for Kerrville is Tech Dot has really hinted at the fact that this list may not have a call for projects in, in two years. This, this list may be that, that, you know, call in, in two years, three, four years, you know, whatever that, that duration may be. This is really the, the kind of the catalyst is getting on that list right now. So, uh, basically what these do, uh, the first one is the, uh, Tom Daniels applications. Uh, Tom Daniels is filling in sidewalks. Now, Safe Routes back in two thousand six or nine, whenever it was, uh, came in and, and put a lot of sidewalks in connecting to elementary schools. Uh, it's, it's also, you know, that's also restricted K through eight. The transportation alternatives is anything by pedestrian, you know, anything other than vehicles. Uh, and, and so what we're gonna do is fill in the gaps. The Tom Daniels application, uh, we've done a portion of, of the Olympic Drive already. It's gonna fill in the other side, uh, which is currently in, in the development agreement with Lippel and R. And then also from Olympic Drive to Singing Wind along Loop Five Thirty-Four, get those kids off the, the highway. You know, and, and give them a surface to walk on it and just the little goat trails through there. Similarly, Tech, uh, Tally Daniels. And we, we had a couple, uh, people, uh, that have complained, filed complaints with Tech Dot, uh, area engineer. That said, we've, we've gotta get connection to Tally off of, uh, can't remember what, what, over off Goat Creek Road on the south side. There's, we've got sidewalks occasionally throughout the subdivision, but then, once you get to Goat Creek Road, because it's Tech Dot, they didn't put anything in. Uh, so we're, we're getting kids this, the safer routes to school. Uh, it's just not through Safe Routes. This one's through the transportation alternatives. And then lastly, we have the sixteen improvements, which has grown into the sixteen and Thompson Drive improvements. That's to enhance pedestrian mobility across, uh, from the south side across the river to downtown. Uh, but also from the north side of the river to the hospital, to the mall, you know, to, to all these different entities that, that we have. Uh, but, you know, even something as simple as the post office. So what this, uh, what these three items are is a resolution of support, uh, that council, it is a requirement as part of the application saying that council, uh, is, is supporting the application, the detailed application going in and will fund any necessary matches that are required. This one is a twenty percent match. Safe Routes was a hundred percent free. And so that, that's essentially what this, uh, resolution is.
So counsel, I do want to clarify in regards to item four E three. That is mostly sidewalk improvements, uh, within the general vicinity around Thompson Drive and, and bound by sixteen. It also intersection improvements at the intersection of Highway sixteen and ninety-eight or Thompson Drive. But also includes a, a better pedestrian crossing along the Sydney Baker Bridge. It does not change any of the through, the, the count of the through traffic lanes along the bridge. So that is continued to have two lanes going south and two lanes going north.
Any idea when this might come to fruition?
June fourteenth is the application deadline.
Okay.
Want to say it was two months, uh, when we, when we heard last time. It'll be kind of that two to three months.
Okay.
There's been, you know, rumors that they may throw more money at, but, uh, basically two to three months is what we're looking at. September is, is our hope to, you know, come to you and say, hey, we got the project. But, uh, you know, one way or another, we'll, we'll be able to get you informed as to, to what happens.
Any other questions, counsel?
Yes, sir. Uh, part of that detailed application that we submitted, that included, did they, do we include in there that image that was shown to council in, in April? Uh, with the possible sidewalks, like was that detailed plan included in that?
Yes, yes. That was part of the two, the Tally and Tom Daniels. And, and that's, that's the beauty of designing it now. Uh, it's not just for this application. You know, the, the more you get into design, rather than just a concept, that was about a fifty percent design. Uh, we could have gone out to construction with that one. The more you get into it, the more points you get. And, and yes, so that, that one will, I'm trying to recall which one we have, uh, Olympic Drive will just get updated. Uh, Tally hasn't had any updates over there. Tom Daniels will require some updates. And then similarly, we have Kimley Horn in, in the contract, uh, to, to do this, you know, very similar on the sixteen improvements.
Are those design plans set in stone for us?
No.
All right, okay.
No, that's, Tech Dot will, will make tweaks. Uh, it, it's pretty close to set in stone. You know, it's, it's black and white, um, but there is, there are deviations as you get into it because these are very, uh, high-level. Once we get into the, the actual, uh, process of, of designing, like, like Mr. Hoppy said, the sidewalk improvements, yeah, but also the pedestrian crossings. Uh, there, there may be requirements that Tech Dot has and, you know, we'll have to make those necessary improvements as well.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions or?
An estimated cost for this project?
The first one, uh, I'd, I'd have to see. I can't remember, recall if I put it in here.
I mean, by, by the, if, if the twenty percent.
The twenty percent, yeah.
What the twenty percent's gonna be? The local match? From Tech Dot, right?
So the, the intent for, right now for our discussion, we just had, uh, we have quarterly discussions with, uh, Tech Dot District Office and, and also area engineer. The Highway sixteen improvements, we're, we're trying to get the local match to be the Tech Dot signal upgrades. You know, because you have federal funding, local match could be Tech Dot. So that's something we're working through. I believe that project is estimated about three-point-two million. We, we're not quite, uh, to the, the full detail application phase yet. Tech Dot, you know, as part of the preliminary application had a few comments, so we've gotta make some modifications to that cost estimate. I believe it was three-two. Tom Daniels was about a million-two. And, uh, Te- Tally was, I believe, about six-hundred thousand.
And Kyle, just to reinforce what you said, we're not signing off tonight. We're not taking that number that you just gave us and saying that we're agreeing to take that number, put twenty percent to it and approve it tonight.
Correct.
You're saying that we need to get on the list so that we can be considered. Once we're considered, we can determine if we can meet other, get other grants, whether it's feasible and how we're going to proceed at that point.
Correct. And, and the other thing too is this does not have to be done next year, uh, or even this year. Uh, I, I believe they give you a four, a four-year window.
So I, I just, I just think it's, I mean, I just don't want to put the cart before the horse. I don't want to be approving something that has a, you know, dollar figure tied to it. Just to be clear that this is not, this is not the final approval of anything.
Right, no, in, in other cities, uh, you know, are, are going through the same thing. It's, it's just a requirement of the resolution language is, is standard language from Tech Dot. It is, it's what they send out to, to everybody. It's part of the detailed application. Uh, it gets us, again, in that window, because if, if you're not on that list, you're, you're, you're not even existing in Tech Dot's mind. So that's, this is a resolution that basically says, hey, we're, you know, we're gonna do what we have to. Other, other funding mechanisms, uh, you know, but by this year, I believe it's twenty-twenty-four, we will, you know, have the funding for this project to, to let the project.
This is really just the first step in the process, indicating a resolution of support, um, you know, and, and hopefully it's awarded. But if not, um, you know, then we go on down the road. If it is, then there's, there's many more steps.
Okay.
We'll be coming back to the council very frequently on a number of different phases, uh, throughout that project.
Okay.
What, what happens if they grant that to us? And later down the road, we want to amend whatever design or plan that we, can they pull back and say, you're not gonna get the funding after all? Really depends on the level of amendment, right? Uh, and, and what impact that might have on the overall project. Uh, cause if it, if it took away points from the scoring element, then it, you know, that would, could potentially pull that, so. Okay. But. So they can, in essence, if they wanted to, right? Okay.
Yes, and, and the other thing too is, is if we're doing sidewalk improvements and we want to go another quarter mile further, the city's on the hook for a hundred percent of, of the overruns. Uh, so, I mean, it, it doesn't, you know, kill the project. If we've got the funds and say, hey, while, while we're here, you know, we want to maximize the, you know, we got a good price on this through Tech Dot, let's go ahead and allocate another, you know, funding source. And we have that option as well.
Okay, do we have a motion on this item four?
Sir, we do have citizen speakers lined up.
Okay, yeah, sure.
Okay, we have five. Jerry Wolf.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Jerry Wolf and I live at five oh nine North Buckboard. Uh, I have two issues with, uh, item E four, E three. First issue, I think will lead into the second. Mr. Hoppy, I think just stated that the traffic flow or the traffic pattern on, uh, the bridge, I call it the Lewis Hayes Bridge. I don't know if that's the proper name or not, uh, was still can be told you two, uh, lanes, uh, in each direction. Is that, but, does that also, um, say that there will be no reduction in the lane sizes? Is that, but does that also say that there will be no reduction in the lane sizes?
Taking public comment, so.
Yeah, yeah, go, go ahead and we'll come back to that.
Okay, because I raise that question because when this was presented in the previous council meeting, I don't know if it's Mr., who spoke it, but I think it was Mr. Burrow. The city engineer stated that one of the, one of the options to improve, to be able to enlarge the sidewalks, which was the driving, driving force of doing this project, was to reduce lane sizes. And I personally very much opposed to that. All you're doing is solving one problem and then creating another one. So that is not, to me, the answer is reducing lane size. And I've talked to several friends who live here in Kerrville, and they have me against it also. So I don't think that's the answer. The second issue, the only way you were able to find out about this reduction in lane size and information about this project itself, about where it really was, was to listen to, to either be here or listen to the last city council meeting on the live streaming, being that there was no detail in the agenda about what this project was about. And that is true for this evening's meeting also with the agenda. Only thing that's attached about this project in the agenda packet is the resolution that's going to be presented tonight that says, we hereby resolve to do, to submit this to, to Tech Dot for approval. That is not enough information. That is not transparency. I think this is a rather serious matter when you start talking about, in the last meeting, about reducing lane sizes on, on the Lewis Hayes Bridge. I think it'd be a lot of, a lot of citizens would be here tonight very concerned if they had known about that.
Okay, okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
Peggy McKay.
Peggy McKay, one oh three Westchester. My question is about the lane sizes too. And all you mentioned were two lanes, north, two lanes, south, nothing about the turn lane. Do you plan to eliminate that turn lane? That, are you going to answer all these at a later time?
Yeah, later.
Okay. And when the proposal on the, in the packet says, the proposed bridge improvements contribute to safe, contiguous, accessible, and degraded walking and bike networks. It will benefit the general public and the public is interested in this. But my question is, this bridge was built to move traffic through town. It's a state highway, and yet there's not one mention of vehicular traffic. And also on the bridge, if you decrease the size of the lanes, you've got garbage trucks coming through here. You've got delivery trucks to HEB, the post office. All the places of destination listed for pedestrians and bicycles are also true for vehicular traffic. And if you take away the left turn lane, sometimes that left turn lane fills up halfway to the bridge. And it looks like the consideration is primarily for the pedestrian, not for vehicular traffic. Also, the recommended size of lanes according to the highway department in Texas in the national highway is eleven to thirteen feet, with thirteen feet being recommended for turn lanes. And when you go across the bridge, it looks to me like the state requirement is a minimum of four feet. It looks like we have to expand the size of the bridge in order to do that. Garbage trucks are eight to eight and a half feet wide. The narrow lanes, it's reported, make people feel uncomfortable and increase the potential for sideswipe collisions. Also, when designed, they're talking about having goals for traffic and sure space for the larger traffic. And just glowingly, that was not included in that proposal. Also, in some of these, there was a, a mention of the city being responsible for cost overruns and a hundred percent of the insurance. So does that amount of money come outside of the money that you expect to get as a grant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Terry Hall.
Good evening, my name's Terry Hall. I live at one hundred and eighteen Independence Lane, not in the city limits, but have been a longtime transportation watchdog around the state of Texas. I'm the founder and director of Texas Turf and Texans for Toll Free Highways. And I'm on the steering committee of a newly formed group here in Kerrville called We the People, Liberty in Action. As far as turf and TTH's work statewide, we've been watchdogging transportation issues for the last sixteen years in the last nine sessions of the legislature. And one of the problems that surfaced over the years is the diversion of road taxes for non-road purposes. We object to Tech Dot's Transportation Alternatives Program, period, being encouraged by Tech Dot, because that's exactly what they're doing. They're encouraging and incentivizing our road taxes for being used for non-road purposes. We've been working on efficiency at Tech Dot, the highest and best use of our gas tax revenues, ending diversions, stopping double tax toll roads, ending wasteful spending, stopping imminent domain abuse like the multinational trans-Texas corridor years ago. And tonight, we object to you applying for this particular use of transportation alternative funds, particularly on the Sydney Baker project. All we hear when we go to the Capitol, and I've been there a lot, and I've been there this session, been sitting through hours and hours of hearings there, all we hear is how we need more money for roads. There's not enough money. We need more debt, we need more tolls, we need to raise all our registration fees. They'd raise the gas tax if they could get away with it. And yet, we're going to spend money that's so scarce for our road projects on something like this. We don't want California-style road diet coming to Kerrville. They've done this in California, they've done it particularly in San Francisco and other areas. And we object to it because it doesn't work. And they've done it in the city of Austin. If you've been to downtown Austin lately, you know how hard it is to travel in a vehicle. They took out a thousand parking spaces to widen their sidewalks. It is now a congested nightmare. Pedestrians don't pay gas tax, road users do. Anything that affects the road capacity for road users in favor of others that didn't pay for that infrastructure violates truth and taxation. That's a misuse of the tax and what it was intended for. It's a diversion of our gas tax for non-road uses that Texans have opposed, really since as long as I've been on, on the scene. But definitely, it's in the GOP platform plank one seventy. Shrinking roadways in order to expand pedestrian sidewalks is straight out of the radical left's New Green Deal and their playbook, and it's called a war on cars. It's known as sustainable development in some circles, transportation equity in other circles. It seeks to put drivers on a road diet in order to force us to change behavior, to force you out of your car into mass transit and to walk in or biking. Sydney Baker is already extremely congested. It needs to be widened, not shrunk. Traffic lights from the pedestrian bridge area back up all the way past Jefferson Street. Sometimes when the middle school lets out, it's all the way backed up to Tybee Stadium. While Peterson Middle School might be moving, of course, soon. It still illustrates that it is the primary artery of bringing traffic off I-ten into our community and to downtown Kerrville. And guess what? Tourists don't come here on foot. They come here with their cars and then might like enjoy taking a walk over the bridge. Tourists don't want to come here if they experience the same traffic they do in the cities they're escaping from. The vast majority of our visitors or residents who want to take a walk, again, don't get here without driving their car first. And we don't want to make our beautiful River Trail or our river area that attracts so many visitors to our area more miserable by sitting in traffic longer. And because the congestion and backup at that light there, cars are always idling there. Walkers don't like breathing in exhaust fumes, and that's perhaps why we don't see a lot of pedestrians on that bridge. We're only encouraging those conditions by exacerbating the traffic and the length of time that the cars sit at the lights. So we respectfully ask that you remove this particular project from consideration on your application for TA funds.
All right, we have one more speaker?
Yes. George, we have two more speakers, George Barudy.
George Barudy, sixteen sixteen Glen Road. So a couple of questions I had were already asked. One is if there was, I don't care that it was or wasn't before, is there a place to go to find what the maps of the planned developments are? Like Mr. Wolf mentioned, not having it in the packet was a little bit disturbing. The other was the amount of cost, the matching cost, that's what I was asking. So I guess it's twenty percent of, if his numbers were more or less, it was five million dollars. So we're looking at a million dollars, I guess, that the city is on the hook for in this. Not to mention any of the overruns. One of the things that I'm, is kind of something Ms. Clarkson, I think, asked about was, in section two of each of the three resolutions, it says something, I don't know if there's a quote or to the effect of, "City Council agrees to comply with all assurances executed in connection with the application and, if funded, the terms of the award." When I read that the first time, it, it almost sounded like if they, if they grant you the funding, you're committing to living up to your end and building this project. If that's not what it meant to say, it, it seems pretty ambiguous, like that's what it's saying. So it, it kind of adds a little extra hook to what you guys are resolving to do tonight. At a minimum, I guarantee you, if you get the award, that to, you're guaranteeing that the council, two years from now or whenever it's talking about, is going to be kind of beat over the head if they deny it because of this ruling. And then something, it's kind of the back end of what the last speaker was talking about. The Sydney Baker project seems to be connecting side, sidewalks connecting. It mentions the wall, the mall, the post office, the hospital, and HEB. All of, all of which have huge parking lots, meaning the people are driving to those locations. So they're not going to get out of their car and walk across the bridge to something. As a, as a cyclist, I, I applaud the idea of getting a safe passage north, north and south of the river. We don't have enough of it. But I don't think Sydney Baker Bridge is the right place to do it. We've got a G Street kind of walking bridge down there. Francisco Lemos is one. Going down, was it Spur ninety-eight? You can cross over with a bike. Can't go down Thompson Drive anywhere with a bike safely. And then going down the other way, I would suggest if you wanted to add another crossing of the river, I would use the foot bridge that's currently on this, by this, Triner Park. Find a way to make that stay as a bridge and use that as a crossing. Then we would have, what, four crossings? That seems enough. As a cyclist, I'm not riding on Sydney Baker Bridge unless you do some serious, if you're talking about narrowing the lanes, I don't know if you are, everybody's bringing that up, I don't know if that's real. As a cyclist, I'm going to be riding next to cars that are feeling crowded and looking over the railing of the bridge thinking that ain't going to happen. So anyways, just think hard about this project.
Brian McDowell.
Yes, my name is Brian McDowell. I'm at thirteen oh nine Malibu Drive. I want to concur with some of the other speakers about the bridge project. I don't think it's worth doing. Narrowing the, the lanes or trying to, to restrict the traffic in any way or whatever is, is not a good idea. There's, as it was mentioned, whatever, there's a lot of trucks that service grocery stores, the hospital, different, different entities on that side of the river come through. That's a state highway. I think it would be a lot better to, to have pedestrian or bike crossings elsewhere, not on that bridge, and not to limit that bridge or whatever in any way, shape, or form. The, the, as, as it was said before, whatever the, the road, the taxes and the collected for the road funds or what it should be for the roads, not necessarily for bike trails or pedestrian passages and walkways and what have you. I think the resources could be used more effectively elsewhere. I take it that the bridge still meets all the safety standards and what have you to where isn't any alterations that need to be made or whatever for, for, other than just, just for the sake of having more room for pedestrians or bicyclists. I think that's about it or whatever. I just wanted to voice my opposition to it, and I think we should drop the idea, so.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. McDowell. Kyle, would you respond to the issue, I think, primary issue of lane sizes?
Yes, if you'll recall from our April meeting, we, we do have a reduction in the lane sizes still adequate. Meeting Tech Dot's recommendations, we, we also want to do a roadway diet. I mean, if you, we, we've heard all the mention of, of being on Sydney Baker Bridge. It's a thirty mile an hour posted speed. Thirty miles an hour is, is not what's posted. We, we do the same thing on, on city streets. We want to, we want to make it safe so that, you know, we, people want to, you know, not only the, the vertical height off the, the river, but give them a safe access across the river to access the park, to access downtown, whatever we're looking at. So to do that, we have to widen the sidewalk, which does take away from the, the roadway. It's still going to have this inter-turn lane. It, it's still, as we said, we've, we've been in discussions with Tech Dot because we, we did look at the alternative. Build a, a, a new pedestrian crossing that was exponentially higher. And, and we, we just, we couldn't afford it. This, this funding mechanism is, is something that, that we can tap into potentially. And again, it's administered by Tech Dot, it's a federal fund, that's only, you know, only for bikes and pedestrian enhancements. It's not for any vehicular.
Say that again.
Which part?
What you just.
The federal funding?
Yeah.
So it, it's, it's a federal funding mechanism administered by Tech Dot. So it's federal highway administration funds that they allocate to each individual state. So this, this cannot be used for traffic, vehicular traffic improvements. We, we can't go, you know, build new roads, you know, we can't do any, anything for vehicles. It has to be specific to pedestrian and bicycle traffic. So, yeah, it, it's one of those that somebody's going to get the money for, for doing this. And, and so we want to, we want to help Kerrville out by not having to spend millions of, of our own tax dollars. And we can, you know, spend twenty percent of what we would doing this ourselves. You know, that, that's, that's our intent is, is to make sure that we provide a safe environment that's approved by Tech Dot, by the city, and in correspondence with, with all regulations.
So you said, sorry, mayor, you said that we will still have the turn lane in all four regular lanes?
Correct.
How are we going to do that if we're going to expand the sidewalk? How much is it going to be expanded?
So right now, the sidewalk, I believe it's four feet, we're going to expand that to six feet. The, the lanes will go down to about ten and a half, eleven feet. Again, it's that we want to, we want to, you know, restrict that road to potentially lower that, the speed of the traffic to provide a safer pedestrian access, you know, back and forth across the river.
What, what's the width of the lanes right now?
I'd, I'd have to look, but I, I believe, let's see.
Eleven?
I think it's anywhere from eleven to, to twelve and a half. I believe eleven and a half is on the eastbound side.
Okay. Council, any other questions on this one?
Have we looked at any alternative locations that was brought up by the community as well? Why, why this one specifically?
So this was really triggered off the comp plan. You know, there was connectivity to, to downtown, you know, connectivity to major sources of the mall, Lewis Hayes Park. You know, just, again, that, that connection piece. We have looked at, you know, we, we do have the old G Street Bridge crossing for the River Trail. River Trail doesn't connect to downtown just yet. If, if you're at the Plaza Apartments, you're likely not going to walk all, all the way down the River Trail, go across old G Street. If you have a direct access here on Sydney Baker, that's going to be the optimal choice. We do have pedestrians on, on the bridge right now. It's not, you know, just specific to, to vehicles. And, and that's what we want to do is make it safer for those pedestrians.
And the Sydney Baker Bridge. I was going to say, in the, in the twenty fifty plan, one of the things we looked at was making a walkable city. More opportunities for, for pedestrians. And I, I will say that I walked across that bridge and did not feel safe because you're walking along there and right over here is cars going thirty and forty miles an hour. One other thing I would, I would note is that something was said about the folks who walk on that bridge aren't paying those road taxes. That's true, but they are citizens, and we want to provide for all of the citizens.
Okay.
Stuart, if you, if we did, if we just did one, two, and three. Oh, no, just, I'm sorry. If we did the elementary schools and you didn't do the other. what would your thoughts be on that?
So again, it's that list I, I told you about earlier. If, if we're not on this list, TaxDOT is likely not going to do a call for projects for an, an unknown set of years. That, that includes Safe Products, which is 100% funded. That, that's also this TA funding, which is 80/20. Essentially, what we've been told is there will not be federal funding for any improvements, bike and pedestrian. So essentially what that means is that we're going to have to put it ourselves if we continue to, you know, have interest in, in these connections.
But this is, it's a package deal?
No, ma'am. Each, each individual one is its own project.
Is, is itself.
So we, we could be awarded tally and, and not Tom Daniels or North 16 improvements.
Seems like to me if we say no to that number three, we've lost an opportunity.
The, the funding.
This is a business meeting, point of order. You're not at the speaker and you haven't been called to speak, so.
Mr. Garcia.
The funding that we're going to get, want to try to get one of the other questions that somebody asked. Can that be used for insurance purposes, for overload purposes? Anything else?
What are you referring to as overload? Overruns like quantity?
Overruns, I'm sorry, yes.
So, a-again, as I mentioned earlier, if, if we as a city have the project awarded by TaxDOT, get it approved, and then decide for any overruns, that's on the city. It would be, you know, very similar to us just going in and letting our own project. The idea with that is that you, you already have a contractor mobilized. You, you have an idea that you just want to connect, and I'll use Olympic Drive for example, you know, we, we just Olympic Drive. If, if there was a little piece that we wanted to connect that was part of a TaxDOT project, we would pay the 100% connection.
Also, I'd like to note that you mentioned this. We dealt, we've dealt with this since April and looked at the possibilities. Okay, Counsel, any other questions?
Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 24 dash 2021 and Resolution Number 25 dash 2021.
All right. Is there a second to that motion? The motion dies for lack of a second. We're back to the original motion of all items one, two, and three. Okay, all in favor, if you'd let it be known by the raised hand?
Do we have a motion?
We don't have a motion yet.
What? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I get ahead of myself. Do we have a motion for one, two, and three?
I move that we approve item 4E, the Resolutions Regarding the Texas Department of Transportation's 2021 Transportation Alternatives Program Application, the three items that were presented together, which are Resolution Number 24 dash 2021, Resolution Number 25 dash 2021, and Resolution Number 26 dash 2021. That is my motion.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I'll second that.
Okay, we've got a second. All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand. And it, and opposition by same manner, it passes four to one.
Mayor, I would just like to make a comment on that. My vote on, on the opposition, as my first motion stated, I wanted to approve the first two. The third one is the only one I had an issue with. And so that's my vote reflected in no, not on the first two, just the last resolution on the Highway 16 and 98 pedestrian traffic improvements.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Now we come to the 5A. Would you read that in, Ms. McElhan?
Ordinance Number 2021 dash 10, second reading. An ordinance amending Chapter 60 Code of Ordinances, City of Kerrville, Texas. Chapter 60, more commonly known as the City Zoning Code, by changing the zoning of a property known as 1555 Highway 173 and consisting of an approximate 7.158 acre tract of land out of the William C. Francis Survey Number 146, Abstract Number 137, and within the City of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas. From an agricultural district, AG, to a multifamily residential zoning district, R3, providing a cumulative clause, providing for severability, providing an effective date in ordering publication. And we have no citizen speaker signed up.
All right. Okay. Mr. Paxton, do you have anything to add to this from our first reading? Okay. Then I'll consider a motion for 5A, or is there discussion?
I'll make, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 2021 dash 10 on second reading.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor, let it be known by the upraised hand. We probably should have said this beforehand. This is for a new nursing facility on, across from River Hill. Okay. 6A, if you'd read that in for us.
Ordinance Number 2021 dash 13, an ordinance amending the city's fiscal year 2021 budget to account for the disbursement of additional funds, the receipt of additional revenue, and make other amendments as provided herein. And there are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right. Ms. Dozier?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. We're going to start tonight with a little bit of a financial update. I'm going to update the council on finances through the end of April, and then we'll also discuss the fifth amendment. Let's see. All right. We're going to start with the general fund. I'm looking at the year-to-date column that is in the middle there. You'll see that through the end of April, general fund has revenue of 20.7 million compared to expenditure 15.3 million. I want to highlight two numbers. So you'll see two numbers there in yellow, sales tax and expenditures and the comparison to the budget. Looking at sales tax in particular. So this is something we've been talking about a lot, and we're going to continue to talk about it since it's one of our largest revenue sources. So sales tax had continued strong performance led by regional retail, online sales, and manufacturing. The actual payment for the month of April, as we've talked about before, was flat compared to the prior year. But we do have to consider that, that April payment relates to sales in February. And there were a lot of businesses that were closed for about a week in February. One thing that I want to update y'all on, and actually you've, you've seen these numbers already, but they're not reflected in the through-April numbers that we just looked at, but the May 2021 sales tax payment. So that's the largest sales tax payment that the city's ever received. 38% higher than May of 2020. So really just an incredible number there. And when I prepared these slides, it was before I had received the sales tax detail from the comptroller. I got that late Friday afternoon. So we think that there's several things going on. And there's three items listed here, stimulus payments. People started receiving those in mid-March. And, and the May 2021 payment reflects sales that actually occurred in March, that two-month lag that we've talked about. Also, winter storm repairs. We know that a lot of people had to make home repairs after the winter storm. We're expecting to see some big numbers there. And then also just when we're comparing back to 2020, we're now entering the time period that we are seeing a COVID impact. So we're comparing back to a low month in 2020 when there were some businesses closed in March of 2020. So those things all were true, but we did receive the sales tax detail. And there were some interesting things, once we could see things by payer, that I wanted to point out. There were a few unusual items. So we look at that detail so we'll know, okay, is this a trend we can count on? Or was something unusual going on with a single business, that kind of thing? So there were a couple of large payers that, we see this happen every once in a while, and, and I'm not exactly sure why it, why it is. It looks like it's a timing thing by one or two days of when businesses submit their sales tax payment to the comptroller. Just to back up a little bit, the way it works, if you go to HEB in March and you buy a $1 item and pay $1.7, HEB gets that 7 cents in March. Then in April, they send it to the state. Then the state splits it apart and sends the city their portion in May. So depending on when those individual businesses file with the state, sometimes we actually have two months hit together, and then the next month, we don't get a payment at all. But it's not that they're late or they didn't pay. It just has to do with the timing of when they actually submitted their return to the comptroller. So we had a couple of large taxpayers that we had that issue with. So that's not something that's a trend. It's something that's just kind of a one-time anomaly. And we also had one taxpayer that had an audit payment. So the comptroller can go in and audit any business, and if they find any unreported sales, I believe over the last four-year period, they can say, okay, you actually, you know, had under-reported or missed this, and we need you to make it up. So there was an audit payment in there too. So when I adjust for all those unusual items, it's still up over 18%. So still very, very healthy increase, but not 38%, but still 18%. And in particular, I looked for things that we saw over a 20% increase in. And we saw over 20% increases in home improvement, construction, big box, furniture, home decor, online sales. And then a few that you would expect to see this COVID impact on department stores and sit-down restaurants. So those would have been ones that had closures starting a year ago, and now we're seeing, you know, that they're open up. So anyway, but good news continued on sales tax. And then on the expenditure side, we were showing numbers that were slightly worse than budget, and that's due to winter storm expenses that we're going to get to in the budget amendment I'll talk about. And also our public safety step increases that, that City Council has been told about before, where we had delayed them and then reinstated them. Moving on to the water fund. So same kind of format. I'm looking at the middle column. That's the year-to-date fiscal year 2021 actual. Total revenue of 7.4 million and expenditures of 7.1 million. So those two numbers in yellow there are the ones I'm going to talk about. So year-to-date water and sewer revenues are still better than budget, even though we had some winter storm adjustments. And you probably got an adjustment on your bill, or lots of people did here when we made sure to take care of all of our customers during the winter storm, and that was at Counsel's request so that they weren't, people weren't penalized by broken pipes and leaks and that kind of thing. But we're still doing a little bit better than budget. This water revenue is a little bit lagged because we, you use the water and then we come out and read your meter after you've used the water. So April billing reflects March consumption. So, you know, we've had a lot of rain here lately, but we're not seeing quite the impact of that rain yet. One other update I wanted to give you on the water fund, though, our advanced metering infrastructure. So we've talked about this throughout the budget process. And I wanted to report that Phase 1 is in progress, and almost 1,800 meters were read remotely for the first time with our May 10 billing. I did want to emphasize that, that we're not replacing any meters. So all of our meters are the same meters. You hear about some other communities doing complete meter replacements, and that's not what's going on here. Instead, what we've done previously is we drive by your house to read your meter. So you have the meter, you have an antenna. The car drives by it and picks up a read from that antenna. We're putting in new antennas, and we're putting in fixed-based data collectors. So it's basically kind of like a tower. It's not, it's not very big, but, but it, it reads signals from those new antennas. And so we're able to read the meter from the office instead of physically having to roll a truck by. So anyway, so it's a big deal, and it's, it's something that most other cities are, or a lot of other cities already have in place. But we're real excited about being able to get information on a real-time basis and identify leaks and big issues sooner, that kind of thing. But we're doing this in a phased approach over a three-year period, and so this is our initial phase, 1,800 meters read. So, so far, so good.
What's the, what's the total amount for that infrastructure update?
It's, I believe it's like 735,000, 700,000-ish over three years. And that includes the, the new antennas. We had to replace some meter boxes and lids, those like heavy lids. Sometimes the antenna can't send the signal through those, so. And some software updates, that kind of thing is what it includes.
Okay. And do you have the, another number, like how much it saves the city for us to be able to do this rather than drive by? And pick up the numbers that way?
I can talk to you offline and give you more detail on the specific project. It is in our 10-year community improvement plan, and there's a detail page in there that has some more information. But I'm happy to walk you through it individually because I know you weren't here last year when we were going through the budget process and describing this project in more detail.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like that. Thank you.
Amy, you might also want to speak to the customer service improvement that it provides in regards to real-time data and leak detection that can be provided to customers rather than having to wait a whole month that they may not know about a leak, so.
Yeah, that's a tremendous improvement. We, we're able to get reads every 15 minutes with this, with this new infrastructure. And like I said, it will be rolled out in phases. So it's not like, you know, right now, we can see everyone's meters. We can see 1,800 right now. And there are meters that are more in the center part of town and not out in the hills and that kind of thing. But certainly it does fit in nicely with our long-range water plan and with Kerrville 2050 as far as an emphasis on water conservation because we lose a lot of water just through leaks. And right now, you know, if you're, if you have a leak in a pipe that starts the day after we read your meter, then we're not going to know about it for, you know, a full month until we go back out there and read it again unless the homeowner happens to be able to see the leak or notice it. But if it's a leak out in your yard that's going into your grass and, you know, you don't notice. And we have customers that, that are very upset because they don't understand why we didn't tell them that they had this leak. But it's actually that we don't know about it until we physically drive by your house to read your meter. And so, yeah, we're very hopeful that, that this will change things significantly. And also, just, this is, you know, down the line, but some of the options with this new technology are, you know, that you could even set up alerts so that if your water usage exceeds a certain amount and you want to know about it, you know, that kind of capability could be in the future if we're able to get these reads remotely in our office. And, you know, citizens would be able to take more control over their own water usage and conservation that way.
Amy, do you have a timeline for a total remote for our area?
Three years.
Three years?
Yeah, so we started, you know, this spring, and then spring of '22, spring of '23 would be when we think we'll have everything done. And if we can get things done quicker than that, we will. But we do have it budgeted over a three-year period, and we are using our own meter technicians to do all these antenna replacements, meter box replacements, that kind of thing that are involved. A lot of these big projects, when you see a city doing a complete replacement, they have to outsource that replacement and bring a whole, you know, team in to do all those changeouts. And we wanted, well, we wanted to first make sure this was going to work well in our area because of our geographic, topographical hills, trees, that kind of thing. We wanted to make sure that we really would be able to pick up all the reads that the salesmen are saying that we will. So we wanted to be a little cautious in our rollout because of that. And then we also said, well, if we're doing it that way, we think our guys can be the ones to go out there and replace all these antennas and meter boxes, and that'll save us some money instead of having to outsource that piece of it.
Okay.
And I, and I don't mean to, mean to keep jumping ahead and go down this rabbit hole, but, and I was going to bring up what you mentioned about the remote access or the capability for the consumers to be able to see that information, whether it's from their phone. I remember we talked about that a little bit. So that would also have an additional cost to either the consumer itself or a cost to the city if we decide to go that route. Correct?
Correct. And the, what's in the initial budget, that initial plan, is not the additional cost for additional measures like that. So it, but it will be something that we've discussed with Counsel as to, you know, if our customers want that. Also, looking at, you know, what's the best deal we can get for that? And would it be something that, you know, the individual customers would pay for or the city would pay for? You know, how would that work? But certainly other cities do have that capability with this kind of technology. All right. And then on the expenditure side, so expenditures continue to trend lower than budget on the water fund side. And that is primarily due to supplies and maintenance costs that are coming in under budget. It's always scary for me to say that each month, but we haven't had any really large, unexpected repairs that can happen on the water fund side. Moving on to the other fund summary, I'm going to kind of speed up through this, and I'm going to hit just a couple of items that are highlighted here in yellow. So on the golf fund, golf fund continues to do really what So on the golf fund, golf fund um continues to do really well. Um, the revenues on the golf fund, seventy-nine thousand dollars better than budget and a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars better than the prior year. Um, so kudos to our parks department. And we also just do continue to benefit from um, you know, there, people did like to play golf during COVID because it is outside and you can socially distance. And it looks like that they started playing and have continued to play. So we're very happy about that. Um, also, um, we did have small fee increase this year. There's new golf carts that I hear great things about, um, great course condition. So we encourage you to go out to our golf course. Mayor, did you have a question?
No, no, go ahead.
Um, then hotel occupancy tax. Um, so this is the tax that's paid when you stay at a hotel um or a Airbnb, VRBO, anything like that in our town. Um, and it has to be used only to promote tourism in our town. So we can't use that for, you know, to pay a police officer or something like that. Um, so occupancy tax, I'm happy to report, has rebounded to pre-pandemic levels. We really had no idea how long um that would take for it to happen. And we didn't know, you know, how long the recession on the occupancy tax fund um would last. But things have rebounded quickly. And um, the, you know, the interesting part, which I guess isn't too surprising, um, but we do see kind of a change in mix there. So when we look at occupancy tax by individual property, because we get reports that show how much each individual property um paid, we do see some changes in customer um preferences. And it does look like individual cabins or um Airbnb, that kind of thing, where, you know, you're not quite so close to a lot of other people. You don't know, um, there seems to be a preference um to that. And we've seen much larger increases there than in some of the traditional properties. All right. Um, update on the American Rescue Plan. So um, we've been talking about this for a little while. Um, Curville is supposed to receive five point one eight million um just based on the population that we have. So it's not something we have to apply for. It's just an allocation to cities that's based on the population. Supposed to be receiving it any time now, but the state hasn't provided any guidance yet on when or which agency will be passing it through or the reporting requirements or anything like that. So we're anxiously awaiting that and each day checking for things. But last week, the U.S. Treasury Department did issue a hundred and fifty-one-page spending guide. Um, that did give us some better um guidance around some of the eligible items. Um, so, you know, we have, we're supposed to get this five million dollars. What can we spend it on? And you can't just spend it on whatever you want. You have to follow the spending guidance. So in this hundred and fifty-one pages, one thing that was um made much more clear and was very helpful is um they clarified the requirements around spending it on water, sewer, and drainage projects. And it's actually the same requirements that we have to meet right now with funds that we receive from the Texas Water Development Board. That's the TWBB. Um, so we're very familiar with those requirements. We understand exactly what those things are. Kyle has a good understanding of it. Um, so that part was much more concrete. Um, but there's some other possible uses that they really didn't put much um clarity around at all. So possibly some tourism uses. Um, we used our first allocation of CARES Act money for public safety. We were hoping for some more guidance there on if there was anything that we might be able to do public safety related this time around. But it's still very gray on that part. Um, so anyway, our first payment, though, is expected in June. And the way that they're doing this is in um two payments. Um, so two point six million dollars each. Um, the first one is expected in June, and then the second one is supposed to be twelve months later. And the expenditures have to be made between March third, twenty twenty-one, and December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. So more to come on that. Um, EA and I have talked about this quite a bit. Um, with the CARES Act funding that we received last year, um, it was kind of the same process where there was lots of um uncertainty and we weren't sure what we could use it on or how we could use it. And lots of like, well, we think it's going to be this, this, this. And then in the end, after we waited for a few months, then they did end up allowing um a broad range of things um for cities to be able to use the funding on. So um, so we'll see what happens this time around. But um, it looks like it's kind of a similar pattern of there's a lot of, a lot of questions, a lot of uncertainty to start with, and we're, we're waiting for some more information.
Amy, I have a question. Um, so we, and I, and I asked this last time, but just to clarify, because I, I didn't ask it this way, but when we look at our budget, do you propose that that money will be allocated there? Or will it be unallocated funds when, by the time we get to October? Do you feel like the guidance will be clear enough for us to have put that money to use within our, our budget?
Um, and I'll, I'll let EA comment as well. But I'm very hopeful that as we go through our summer budget process, we can really narrow down what the best use of this um ARPA money is, and we can actually budget for it as part of the budget process. And if it is a longer-range project, you know, it may be something that's part of our ten-year CIP plan that's spent over a couple of years through twenty twenty-four. Um, you know, the other piece of this that we're waiting on and that's kind of a big player here is the, the infrastructure bill that um is currently in Congress. Um, we don't know when that will pass, if that will pass, and then what the parameters will be on that. But we want to make sure that we um, you know, if we're eligible for funding through that bill, that we don't use these, um, you know, put it for a project here, that we could have put it for a project here, and, you know, that kind of thing. So it may be a little bit dependent on how that bill progresses. Um, but yeah, I'm hopeful that this summer, there'll be a lot more clarity around what we could use these funds for.
Do we know if, do we know if property tax relief is a part of that?
Property tax relief is specifically not allowed. Yeah, there's a few things that you cannot um use the money for. And you cannot use it to fund your pensions. You cannot use it um to reduce your taxes.
Okay.
I think there's a couple other, those are the two I remember off the top of my head. All right. Okay. Next up, real estate metrics. Um, so just wanted to put these up quickly because they um are pretty crazy. This is just for the month of April. And these metrics were provided by the Curville Board of Realtors. So they include some things that aren't necessarily within the Curville city limit. But um, this looks like a seller's market to me. So um, I know we have a lot of um real estate knowledge in the room. So um, anyway. Crazy time for Curville real estate. Um, and then the unemployment rate, I wanted to highlight that as well. Um, so this data is kind of lagged. So March is the last month that's available on the unemployment rate right now. So Curville unemployment rate currently at five point eight percent, which is um a low unemployment rate. But it's still almost double what our pre-pandemic unemployment rate was. Um, it'd be interesting to see if there's any changes once the extra unemployment benefits end in June. There's a lot of, you know, speculation that that may change some things. Um, anyway, it looks like there's a lot of help wanted signs in Curville as well, so. But interesting that it still is almost double what, what it was in twenty nineteen. All right. So now we get to the budget amendment. Um, so just want to um give a little bit of background here. So um, budget amendments are something that we regularly do. We pass an annual budget. And then usually, once during the year and once at year-end, but it can be more often or less often than, than that, we come back to council and we say, we'd like to amend the budget. And council has to approve amending the budget. It's done through an ordinance and two readings are required. So this is the first reading. And so a budget amendment is needed if we are increasing um overall expenditures or increasing overall revenues, either one. But if we're changing that total amount, um, then we need council's approval on it. So this is kind of our mid-year um amendment, even though we're a little past mid-year. But um, basically, we want to account for some things that we know have already happened. Um, and the summary is listed here. So the first thing is grants. Um, we don't budget for grants until we receive them. So we don't count on receiving a grant. So anytime we receive a grant, we're going to need to come back to y'all with a budget amendment because we didn't budget for something until it was actually awarded. Um, second thing, better-than-anticipated sales tax revenue. Um, the winter storm impact. So we had increased um salary costs due to overtime and extra labor as well as um just supplies, materials, that kind of thing, costs related to the winter storm. Um, unexpected repairs. So we've had um unexpected repairs at the Olympic pool. We've brought those to y'all for your consideration on individual repairs that are over fifty thousand. But we're actually going to amend the budget for it um here. Um, transfers between funds and asset replacement. And I'll go into a little bit more on those as we get to the next slide. So on the general fund, um, don't, don't be scared by seeing a column that says debit and credit. Um, but uh, just to give you a little bit of background, um, if you increase an expenditure, that's showing up in the debit column. And if you increase a revenue, that's showing up in the credit column. So on the general fund, um, we're asking for approval to increase our revenue budget and increase our expense budget. So you'll see that the revenue increase is the same as the expense increase. So yes, we are um asking council to approve more expenditures, but we have the revenues to cover it. We're not asking for that to come out of fund balance. So we have um revenues related to sales tax, revenues related to grants that we received. And also, um, this last part, this ambulance supplement piece right here, um, I just kind of broke this out separately. But in the past, for the last several years, we've received something called an ambulance supplement payment that is a payment from the state that helps reimburse us for unreimbursed Medicaid costs. So when we've transported Medicaid patient, what we get from Medicaid doesn't cover all of the cost of transporting them. And so the state has a special program to ask for that unreimbursed cost. Um, we found out just a couple of months ago that um they're not going to be dispersing any funds for twenty twenty-one. And we had plans that as a revenue in our budget that, um, and now we're not going to receive it. So that's why you see it showing up as a debit to a revenue, so a reduction of a revenue. But luckily, um, we did receive care, additional CARES Act funding for lost EMS revenue due to COVID. And um, we actually had budgeted two hundred thousand dollars for ambulance supplement. We only got a hundred and seventy-five in CARES Act funding, but that covers most of that lost revenue. So that's what that is. And you'll see the expenditures listed down below. Um, the things that we talked about, the pool, um, the leak repair and the pump house repair. Um, then we have um an amount here for the step plan increases for public safety. We have engineering services. We have the winter storm impact. And then we have um some EMS equipment that um, that is specifically related to some, a revenue uh grant that we received on the EMS side.
Amy, can I ask you a question on the, on the, in the ambulance supplement?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Um, and I think you may have spoken to this before, but do you know if they're planning to, uh, is this going to, is this going to be something that we're not going to expect to see?
What they've told, yeah, what they've told us is that they want to go to an every-two-year cycle, which would have been nice to know that a little while ago. But um, so what they've officially said is that they plan to do a every-two-year ambulance, ambulance supplement payment. And you apply for funding, you know, two years at a time because you have to submit documentation of your unrecovered costs, that kind of thing. And you would do that on a two-year cycle instead of a one-year cycle.
It's lagging?
Um, yes. And so, yeah, there would be nothing in twenty twenty-one, but you could submit the cost for both twenty-one and twenty-two and the following year. So they're saying that you, we could potentially get a payment equal to two years worth at one time. And that would probably be in twenty twenty-three that we would get that. Um, honestly, though, we've seen so many changes in this program over the last few years and significant issues around, um, you know, it starts off that it's going to be this, and then it gets cut and cut and cut, that um we've decided um from a budgetary perspective to treat it more like a grant going forward. And if we receive it, we'll come back to y'all and ask you to amend the budget because it's a grant, but we're not going to count on it as a part of revenue.
Okay. Was, sorry, I thought the mayor was going to say something. Um, if you could go back to the previous slide. I'm looking at the, the pool maintenance. Was that the emergency maintenance that was done? That was?
Yeah, so, yeah, it's both. Um, there was two different pieces. So pump house repairs, and that was something that came to council and that council approved individually. And then also um leak repairs and the actual plaster of the pool.
I'm just looking at that from a, from a standpoint on council and how we budget and make sure that we take care of what needs to be taken care of. Um, that cost could have probably been reduced had we have been taking care of that continuously throughout the years. Um, so that's just something that I want to point out for us to, to be doing this next budget process.
Yeah, definitely is um aging infrastructure there. Um, okay. Moving down the list here on the water fund. Um, we had a hundred thousand dollars in excess funds from the end of twenty twenty um that we would like to move over to the asset replacement fund. So on both our general fund and our water fund, we have something called asset replacement funds. And they're basically kind of like a savings account that we use to buy vehicles and equipment from. But they're both um funded with cash from those operating funds. And so as we see that we have some extra cash available, we try to transfer um excess funds over to that asset replacement fund. So this is a hundred thousand dollar transfer on the water fund side to the um asset, water asset replacement fund. Um, the next one is the general asset replacement fund. This is really timing differences on a lot of these items here. Um, and these are going to be things that y'all feel like, especially the three of y'all that have been here the longest, that you probably, you probably feel like you've seen these four times already, but, um, and you kind of have. Um, so basically, um, on the general asset replacement fund, at the end of last year, we had money um left in our general operating fund. Council approved moving some money over to the asset replacement fund. So that was a budget amendment. We told y'all what that money was earmarked for, um, for some specific items. Um, now we're coming back to you and saying, can you amend the budget this year to actually purchase some of those items that we specifically talked to you about in the um year-end budget amendment? Um, also, um, there's a few things that um, that we have timing issues on. So um, as you probably heard, there's a car shortage right now. Um, and with, you know, microprocessors, it sounds like is what's slowing down a lot of um car orders. And so we had several um budgeted items in here that we ordered, um, came to council, got approval, ordered police vehicles last year. Um, they didn't come in. And it took like, you know, uh, almost a year or something like that for these vehicles to come in. So they didn't come in until this fiscal year. So we have to come back to council, even though y'all have already seen this multiple times, and say like, okay, well, we got, we finally got them, but now it's a new fiscal year. So we need to amend the budget for that. Um, next thing, general debt service.
Let's, let's, let's move through it kind of quickly.
Okay. Next thing, general debt service. Um, a million dollars um to repay the loan with K-Pub, um, and that's EIC-funded. And then um the last things here are for the grant fund and insurance reserve fund. And these are items um like we talked about before, grants that were actually received this year that now we're doing budget amendments for both the receipt of the revenue and the um expenditure. That's it.
Okay, council, questions, comments?
Thank you, Amy. Good report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Before we move to item number seven A, I just want to comment.
Uh, we, yeah. Excuse me.
Go ahead, go ahead. Oh, my comment is, you look at that back row of the staff and these two desks. These folks really do a good job and they are very appreciated. And I don't know why tonight we have guards on either end for them, but, but anyway.
Because we don't want to let them out.
Don't let them out, okay.
Mayor, may I make a, may I make a motion that we approve order number twenty, twenty-one dash thirteen on First Street?
You, you may.
I'll second.
Okay. Got a motion second, okay? Further discussion? All in favor, raise the right hand? All right. And that's just on the budget adjustment, which will come back to us next council meeting. Okay? All right. Seven A, Ms. McLean.
Review of declaration of local state of disaster due to a public health emergency, March twentieth, twenty twenty.
Okay, Mr. Hoppe.
Mayor, we don't have uh much to report. In fact, we can
In fact, we gave Chief Maloney the night off tonight so he can go watch his daughter and her choir concert. Fortunately, we've had a, a positive trend in COVID-nineteen cases locally, we've only got thirty active cases. You know, this is an item that council asked to come back up on your agenda on a monthly basis. You guys could continue to review this. I will say that the governor's order was renewed, the emergency declaration was renewed on May fifth for the continuation through May. We don't anticipate that that's going to change in the June timeframe. You know, we would ask going forward, one of the biggest elements with this disaster declaration related to COVID-nineteen is the continuation of potential funding elements. And Amy mentioned the ARPA funding earlier and flexibility elements related to, you know, ultimately, that's a disaster recovery-related element. And so, you know, at this time, you know, we would recommend that council keep this in place to provide us continued flexibility in regards to those funding elements.
Okay, all right. Any discussion or any speakers?
No speakers, sir, no citizen speakers.
Does the governor's order cover us under that? Like, let's just say hypothetically, we were to pull back on this order. Would the governor's order still cover us on what we want to get?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, this is a kind of a belt and suspenders approach, right? So, you know, it, we're, we're always leery, and when you're talking about, you know, millions of dollars on ARPA funding, you know, it's just, it's, it's belt and suspenders, right?
And just to clarify one thing with our CARES Act funding that we specifically use for public safety purposes. When we submitted our public safety payroll and all of our documentation, we did have to submit a copy of the city's emergency order with that funding. And like EA said, we don't have the final guidance on this next round, but we certainly wouldn't want to lose an option.
Okay. All right, no actions required. Now, seven B.
Restated interlocal agreement for the continued existence of a joint airport board to provide management of Kerrville Kerr County Airport, and there are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right, EA, I mean, Mr. Hoppe?
Mayor and council, we've, this has been an item we've been working very diligently with county and airport board on for many months. Several of you are liaisons on that board and, and have helped us throughout the subcommittee process and working through really a revamp. As you recall, there was a modestly amended interlocal several years ago. And what this did, this really had a few key elements. One of the key elements was to clean up the staggering of the boards, basically providing for, there's five members on that board on that jointly owned facility. Those are appointed by both members of this body. As you recall, this body just made a new appointment, in fact, at one of your last meetings. And so what this does is provides for a five-year term. And so the, the thought, the hope, I think, is that only one member will be coming off on any given year. And so there's a little bit of institutional knowledge that is carried over from year to year and that just assists with the, the management of that. This is a ten-year agreement. This also provides for clarifications in regards to insurance, in regards to folks picking up a partial term if someone were to step off the board, when it counts as a full board, you know, full term versus a, a partial term. And also, it just generally a really good cleanup of the document that was from several years back. If you haven't answered any questions, you may have.
We also, I think a gentleman stood up in case he wants to address this any further, if we want to give him an opportunity there.
Dr. Mosher? We're, we're going to allow that.
Thank you, Mayor, council and staff, we know it does work back here. I really want to thank EA, he really did most heavy lifting on this. And Judy, I don't think she's missed a meeting that we've had on anything to do with the airport at any time. I thank you sincerely for that. And, you know, I look at cause, I won't talk very long, I promise. I look at cause and effect, you know, I do have a little medical background. And, you know, so the, the effect, it's what we've seen at the airport. It was just under fourteen years ago, Abbott got involved and this agreement came about. What I've been told, I wasn't here then. But we were burning almost nine hundred thousand dollars a year just for operations to keep the airport open. Sounds like a lot of money and it is, but we were getting more benefit than that. And in two thousand and eighteen, we're getting almost thirty-nine million dollars of benefit to the community. So back then, it's probably wasn't far from them with Moonie Crank and Hard and some other companies. But, so Abbott got involved and created this interlocal agreement, which basically allows the airport board to function as an independent board. So they started running its business, and that's what we continue to do. And I spoke a couple weeks ago bragging about what a great board we have. So I echo what EA says, there is some, there's a lot of things that really didn't apply to the current times. And it was mainly cleanup, it wasn't a huge changes, you know, the biggest change was the terms, you know. And, and it's very important that the terms be set as they are because to lose two-fifths of the board in any one year is really a tragedy. And the board's only gotten better, so I want to thank you very much, EA. And pencil into your calendars, if you don't know already, we're having the annual city-county airport meeting on June sixteenth. And following that is going to be a reception for Jeff Manz, he's been a significant part of this board. So, do you have any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
State your name and your address.
Sorry, Mark Mosher, Airport, six thirty-four Lower Torrey.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
We just need to, we have a, we have a diamond in the rough out there. We just need to keep polishing, and that's part of what this will, will help us do.
It is a great asset and it's serving us very well now. If you look at the general transportation, but also if you look at the economic development impact, we ought to be very proud of what we have. Okay, yes.
I understand that there were some changes made to the agreement, that there were some before, like probably Friday last week, and then some on Monday, I think. I think we kind of went over those a little bit. I never got a copy of the final agreement. So with what I have here in front of me with the packet that I got, can you kind of give me a summary of?
Sure.
Or tell me what those changes are?
The, first of all, the terms.
If you've come to the podium.
The terms of five years, but if somebody serves part of that term, leaves town, whatever, we don't want to lose the five-year terms. So what, what minimum is a full term? And it was determined jointly by the city and county, by a committee, the city and county, that that was going to be thirty-six months. And there's two definitions of what that was in the agreement. And it was an oversight, one said thirty, one said thirty-six. So that was a claim to make them both state thirty-six.
Okay, got you.
Thank you.
And the county did approve this on Monday.
Yeah, I just approved it yesterday.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion on item seven B?
I'll make a motion that we accept the restated interlocal agreement for the continued existence of joint airport board to provide management for the Kerrville Kerr County Airport.
Second.
Okay, we have a second?
Sir.
Okay, all in favor, if you'd let it be known by the raised hand and it's unanimous? Okay, we come to items for future agendas, and I wanted to say something there. In our community vision, growing out of twenty fifty, it says Kerrville will be a vibrant, welcoming and inclusive community that respects and protects the natural environment that surrounds it. I want to tell you, there's an increasing interest in how we protect our natural environment and what that means, how we do it. And just seems to be a growing number of citizens involved in that. And so I think in future agendas, we're going to say items before it's related to that. Anybody else?
I do have two, Mayor. I discussed both of these with staff, actually, and I'm, one of them before council. One of them is to review and possibly take action on what, and to determine what the, who the interview committees are going to be for our boards. Now that we have a new coun, two new councilors, I don't know if we did that when Councilmember Hughes got on. And then secondly, you know, we have the Senior Services Advisory Committee that's been going on right now. I would also like us to take a review and possibly take action on the structure and application process for the Kerrville Area Youth Leadership Academy and looking at that for this upcoming school year.
All right, okay. Anybody else? Okay. All right, is there a motion for an executive session tonight?
I will move that we move, oh, into executive session four. Help me, Mike, which one do I need here?
Oh, four, oh, zero, zero, seven, four?
Five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four.
Oh, zero, oh, seven, four, okay.
Yeah, personnel officers, okay.
Move into executive session for five-five-one-point-oh-seven-four.
I'll second that.
All right, okay, we got a motion second, all in favor, if you'll raise your hands. Okay. Okay, let's adjourn then to the conference room over here. We are almost back in session. We're back?
Yes.
Okay, we're back in session at eight-twenty-two. And is there a motion coming out of the executive session?
Well, and Mayor, I'd just like to say, if we consider appointing a member of council TSE, I just wanted to publicly say that I'm more than happy to serve on that board.
Okay, all right, okay.
And I would like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, but before I actually make the motion, we had twelve applications in altogether. And I just want to thank all those twelve people for their interest and for putting in, in an application. And we just really, really appreciate it, so I just want to say thank you to all of them. I would like, my motion would like to say that we reappoint the two members that were available for reappointment, Danny Almond and Greg Richards. And then for new appointments, I would like to recommend Greg Appel and from council, Kim Clarkson.
Right, okay. Yeah, you've heard that motion for the reappointments and for councilperson Kim Clarkson and then new member on EIC, Greg Appel. Do we have any discussion of that matter?
We need a second.
All.
We need a second. We need a second.
You do, yeah, we need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, all right, all in favor of that motion, if you let it be known by the raised hand? Okay, thank you. And we are adjourned at eight-twenty-three.